Tonight, I'm very excited to speak to Ron Branster again about energy policy in Minnesota. And you've certainly noticed that your energy rates have gone up, 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 up with Rochester Public Utilities, as well as Minnesota Energy, which is based out of New York, upstate New York. So you were invited to attend those meetings about your energy rates going up, but maybe you were too busy to notice, but now you're getting those bills and it's getting harder to pay. Hey, Ron Branster, what do you have for Minnesota, for all of us about energy rates and the influence of outside global in Rochester or any town in Minnesota?
That's a good question. So what we have discovered in the last, or at least what I've discovered in the last two weeks, is the big lie, if you want to say. One of the reasons they're pushing solar so heavily in Minnesota is the fact that they say the Becker Coal Fire Plant, Sherco, is about to close in 2030, which produces about eighty to eighty-five percent of the energy in Minnesota. If they shut that coal fire plant down, we're gonna have to go down, they wanna go down to renewable energies of a hundred percent renewable. But if we look at the renewable energies, which is wind and solar, they only produce two point five percent of energy and up to three to three point five on a very, very good day. So we're losing about eighty-two percent of our energy source to solar. And in the process, we're losing a very large, well, we don't even know what the outcome is gonna be of land in Minnesota going towards solar fields that are trying to produce only two point five to three percent. So what they've told us is, just what I said, Sherco is gonna close. But that's been the mantra for about three years now. But I just found the case study, a Minnesota case study on solar, and they actually been talking about this since 2008 on producing solar in Minnesota to go to renewable energies. And they've been pushing through heavy restrictions and changing the guidelines and regulations now they're gonna regulate the land. They still don't know, they keep changing and moving the needle on solar. And we're seeing farmers sell out their land or lease out their land for solar. I want everybody to know this is very important. Solar is voluntary. It's not mandatory. Renewable energies is voluntary. There's nothing mandatory about energy. Energy, this is just a voluntary program to shut down fossil fuels. And we know that we're following the guidelines of Germany. In fact, we sent over delegates from Germany and Germany has sent them back to Minnesota. And we're sending delegates back and forth to try to see how Germany is, how it's working over there because they're like twenty years ahead of us. And it has failed at every single level. They're turning on many of their plants back on again and because the energy is not feeding the people and they have a blackout. So that's what I'm seeing. This has been going on since 2008. They told us about 2017, sixteen, seventeen, they were gonna close the coal fire plants. Well, that was just a ruse because they've been doing this a lot longer and they haven't been telling the public what they're doing. So if you go on MISO, M-I-M-I-S-O in Minnesota, MISO.com, you can see real-time energy and you're gonna see what solar and wind produce as we speak right now. And you're gonna see it's not above three. And at that continual rate, we will have to have, we'll have blackouts in Minnesota. It's a gimme.
In Rochester, we do receive regular notices from RPU that there's going to be potential blackouts. These are released through KROC AM FM radio. It's astonishing to think in destination medical city that we have these energy blackouts potentially. The warnings come through, just within the last twenty-four hours, there was another warning of a blackout on Thursday. And we were advised to limit our usage of electricity because there could be a potential blackout inside the city that houses Mayo Clinic. Was that website M-I-S-O?
M-I-S-O, MISO.
M-I-S-O dot com. That's a very interesting resource. Thank you for that. Do you have any reaction to this idea that Rochester could be without electricity at some point? And we've heard rumors that, well, it's not a rumor, but it's a fact that the Mayo Clinic has its own sources of gas power generator-produced electricity.
They have to place that size. They have to have something. It's no different than the transportation. You know, they have these solar-driven buses. And solar-driven buses, I know for a fact the solar-driven buses have went down because they didn't have enough power to generate them. And they then hook them up to the diesel plants at night to keep them going. So they're always hooked up to a non-renewable energy all the time in order to make it look like renewable energy is the way to go. And in fact, renewable energy is not the way to go, but they constantly have the backup. So it's there all the time.
And we remember the days when the coal-fired electric generators were operating next to Silver Lake. And that's why we had the Canadian geese staying here for the winter months because the water was a higher temperature during the winter because the water would be used to go through the coal-fired energy plant to cool the generators somehow. So that kept the lake temperature high and so we had the Canadian geese stopping here. Now that we no longer have that coal-fired energy plant, though, we're told that the Mayo Clinic has its own power supply through natural gas generators in a couple of locations. And this is on me right now. This isn't on you, what I'm saying, of course. Because I've been told that there are stations where natural gas is used to power electric generators. Of course, an operation like the Mayo Clinic would need its own power supply. So I'm not putting any words in your mouth. I'm just putting that out there. That there's a dual-tiered system of energy production, one for a certain group of people and the other for the occupants of Rochester, the people who live here. So we have shortages of electricity and we're warned in advance by RPU and Minnesota Energy, not so much Minnesota Energy, but mostly RPU, that we may experience outages. In your research, have you seen any of the evidence about the Germans coming to Rochester to give us advice about energy policy in Rochester? Although they're walking away from their own green energy policies in Germany, it's strange that the Germans would still come here to give us advice about how to run our energy and vice versa. I mean, with Senator Senjum, particularly Senator Senjum along with Mayor Norton, now County Commissioner Senjum, but he's been to Germany on Norton's trips and then the Germans have come here and it's been sort of a celebratory aspect of yay, this is a big deal because the Germans are involved in Rochester and Rochester is trying to emulate the Germans. And sorry, I've been talking too much.
You're one hundred percent correct. So the experiment was to mimic the German the German solar energy project that's twenty years ahead of Minnesota. So we've been sending delegates over there from Minnesota, especially from the University of Minnesota, over to Germany so they can see what we are doing over there. And there are students and advisors that are coming to Minnesota and putting together what they think has worked over there. And in fact, it hasn't worked, it's failed. But they're over here implementing it with the University of Minnesota. So we're seeing, I'm not sure who, well, actually I do. I mean, there are groups, it says on the computer here what their names are. But yeah, we also have state representatives, state representative, now I think it's the county commissioner, which is Dave Senjum. He's been over there. We've had delegates that have been flying back and forth. And you understand that this is not a, this is not a successful program. It has failed at every single level. And all we're losing is we're losing prime property. And Minnesota resembles a lot like Germany. And we produce the least amount of solar rays in the state, in the country. We produce, Minnesota produces the least amount of solar and yet we're one of the leading solar states in the nation. That doesn't make any sense.
And Minnesota has the arable farmland, this good black dirt, this good earth that is useful for producing crops. And why aren't we putting these solar panels on the roofs of buildings in urban centers? Put it on the roof of a building, put it on the roof of a house or a parking area, but leave the arable farmland alone? It doesn't really make any sense. And since the Germans are rumored to be cutting down their own forests so that people can burn the wood to provide heat in their homes, it's weird that we're told that we need to mimic the German Green Party's model. And the Germans have already walked away from their own energy policy models. The German Green Party is done. It's strange to me that in Rochester, people can't see like the memo somehow that the German Green Party is over. They're done. Put a knife in it, put a fork in it. You know, it's not producing any alternatives for the people of Germany. So why would Dave Senjum and Mayor Kim Norton be so interested in doing these green policy initiatives? Is there a larger agenda at play somehow?
Okay, so that's a good question. So under the Biden administration, he put billions of dollars into solar energies nationally. And many of these solar companies like Soul Smart, Soul Smart works for the Department of Energy, Department of Energy Initiatives, I think. But anyways, they work for the government and they partnered with several nonprofit organizations. One of those would be Great Plains Institute. You'll see that name come up all over. That's a nonprofit. We also got IREC. There's another acronym. I think it's IMCA, I believe. I may be wrong on that one. And so these are all nonprofits. So you're noticing here the people that are investing in the solar farms are developers, so they're making money. Working with only one governmental agencies and the foundations, the nonprofits are facilitating these programs. So there's a lot of government funding in solar. That's something that's gonna fail. So they're just redistributing the money to increase the profits of these foundations. And Great Plains Institute, by the way, is very powerful. They're everywhere. They're in Minnesota. Soul Smart, I just looked, is in Rochester, in Olmsted County. And they're facilitating these through 501(c)(3)'s. So you have to ask yourself, who is the representative here? And I brought this up to XL Energy. I said, to a panel. I said, if we have solar here, which is voluntary, and farmers don't want it to their adjacent land, who represents them? And three state representatives said they have no idea. I said, well, you're supposed to be a representative. And they told me that in 2007, the state legislators gave up their authority to the CUP, the PUC. And they took the authority away from elected people and gave it to the hands of the governor. So right now, the governor has total control of how solar is implemented, them and XL. And so XL, by the way, so you understand, they're trying to tell you that the energy is going back into your city, which is gonna reduce your carbon footprint and your energy cost. But in fact, it's not because XL Energy is owned by Vanguard and BlackRock. And those are two of the, they're the two largest, the two largest investor firms in the world. And so they're selling all of this energy. So the energy that you put a solar field up next to your city thinking you're gonna benefit, it's actually sold to the inner city or sold out of state. You're not benefiting by this. XL Energy is selling this energy because they're owned by BlackRock and Vanguard. It's a commodity. Investors are investing into a commodity. They don't get no investment off your land, you know, let's say, invested to crop, you know, crop investments. But now they're invested into renewable energies. That will fail. It's not gonna work. I'll tell you right now, it's not gonna work.
So are they hoping to profit in the short term and then just switch it to some other model once it fails outright?
Yeah. So the developers themselves, like this one guy, he's one guy who started the company. He's up to seven employees now. He's one guy going out and convincing farmers to lease their land out. One guy to lease their land out so he could put a solar development site on that land. He's making huge dollars. One guy is convincing county commissioners in our area to lease out their land. And then the developing country, maybe it'd be Aurora or it could be, it used to be Geronimo. There's all kinds of these solar companies that are out there. And they could own this land and lease out the farmer's land for up to twenty-five years. But a lot of times, these solar companies come in and then they sell it to another solar company. And sometimes it's sold two, three, four, or five times before the county commissioners even know how to charge that property for taxes. And how I know that is because the county told me. He said, we didn't even know it was sold three times. So these guys are constantly selling off this land and for these investors. And it's becoming a big scam out there, not only for the taxpayers. It's a scam for the people who are getting into buying these energy credits. But we're losing prime farmland for the process of cheap energy, which it's, in the end, because it's so subsidized by the United States government, it's so subsidized. It used to be an acre was like fifteen hundred dollars per acre. Now it's up to like forty-five hundred dollars an acre. Subsidized from the government. When Trump gets in the office, watch those subsidies drop. Watch solar drop drastically. And now these energy companies are gonna be left with in all these leases. And I have a feeling you might see a lot of failures coming up here. I do. It's not that I'm gonna get solar. You can put solar on your house. You can put solar on your farm. You can individually do solar. But why should the community have to bear the brunt, especially where you live, the eyesores, so they can sell this energy to the inner city?
It's subsidized by the government.
That's correct.
It's paying, so the money goes from taxpayers to the investor. So it's a transfer of wealth from taxpayers to a wealthy investor. It sounds like affordable housing.
Well, it does sound like, but it also sounds like refugee resettlement. They had a national organization that created, and they got into all the 501(c)(3)'s that were volunteer agencies and they run the program. Solar energy is no different. It was a national organization, Soul Smart, that worked with Great Plains Institute, IREC, and many others. And they're, again, nonprofits. There's no difference. How these counties are working is they create these programs, they then hand them off to somebody else, like maybe Environmental Services, and then they work with all these foundations. And there is no accountability. After that, it's, who do you go to when you have an issue? You don't, because they gave it away to a fourth branch of government, which is 501(c)(3)'s. We're being scammed at every level, every level.
It's a rollout of initiatives through NGOs. So it plays into the Agenda Twenty-One, Agenda Twenty-Thirty model of government, which the British are already walking away from with Brexit. And the French are walking away from, the Germans are rejecting it. They don't want unelected, nameless, faceless government bureaucrats rolling out policy initiatives on communities without any public discourse or debate about the efficacy of those programs. It's a whole agenda. It's a whole program. A plethora of various programs that are destroying participatory democracy. Whether you wanna call it a republic or a democracy, it's turning over authority to a bunch of elites that nobody knows who they are. And then they profit off these systems that are developed. Is there anything else to say about these trips to Europe? Because some of us have asked repeatedly about Dave Senjum's trips to Europe with the German Green Party, especially during the lockdowns. There were numerous trips with Mayor Norton to Germany during the lockdown and since the lockdown. And she's due to speak at the World Economic Forum. She's going to lecture the WEF members in her ideas and so forth. Have you any further information you could help us understand what's going on in Rochester? And I don't mean to be sort of centric, just like exclusively worried about Rochester, but we're now, we're told that we're the second-largest city in Minnesota instead of the third-largest city in Minnesota. And so what they're rolling out in Rochester is bound to be important for the rest of the state because what they do to us here is going to spread out into the smaller hamlets and towns. And I just wanna let people know what's coming their way. Have you found anything about energy policy that could be relevant to what I'm asking?
Yeah, so yes, a couple of different things. You asked about Dave Senjum going to Germany, you asked, well, Kim Norton to Germany. They actually, back in 2019, they both went to Germany, they were going to go to Germany to work on these particular initiatives. There's about, back then, we had a group of cities in Minnesota. They were leaders for several Minnesota cities, including Rochester, Alpriver Morris, White Bear Lake, Warren, and Duluth. And they were sending these people all the way to Germany. And then Germany was sending their delegates back to Minnesota. So this is an ongoing program here. Dave Senjum is deep into energy. He knows exactly, if you look at the websites with Rochester, they continually talk about sustainable development, which is the same word as Agenda Twenty-One or the transformation of the human society and how they see fit. So Dave Senjum is, it says right here, Dave Senjum, City and Rochester Sustainability Coordinator, Kristin Knudsen and Katie Jones from the Center of Energy Environment. Now, wow, now that just tells you right there on their own website that traveling with Bright from Rochester, or Norton, Dave Senjum, and the Rochester Sustainable Development Coordinator. Now, when you see a word like sustainability coordinator, that's Agenda Twenty-One. So it'd be interesting to see her name come up and find out where she went to school and find out all the stuff that she has been trained on to push the Agenda Twenty-One on energy in Rochester. Now, that name was new to me, but I guarantee you're gonna find out that Dave Senjum is deep into the heart of sustainable development goals.
Well, he hosted, both Mayor Norton and Dave Senjum hosted the Germans here in Rochester. German advisors came over on numerous occasions and they were interviewed. Some of those interviews were grabbed off the internet and then uploaded to other channels so that we could preserve that documentation. But Dave Senjum thought it was a very big deal that the Germans were here giving us advice in 2019, 2020. When we were in lockdown, when Rochester, we were forced to wear masks and our community was locked down, Dave Senjum actually was over in Germany with Mayor Norton. And we have photographic evidence of them at large meetings, indoors, unmasked. They were not wearing masks. And it's a grave sin to not wear a mask, as you know. But in Germany, apparently, for these political meetings, it was just fine that they were in restaurants. Our restaurants were shut down, but we have photographs of Mayor Norton inside German restaurants in Europe during COVID-19. And she's not wearing a mask, but that's immaterial for this conversation. We were never told what were the discourses that she engaged in, which German politicians did she meet with? And who paid for her trip was another issue that was raised at the time. But yeah, there's a lot of money in energy. Senjum and Mayor Norton hosted the Germans over here as well. And they posted photographs of all these people together in restaurants having nice expensive meals. But we weren't allowed to know, of course, what they were talking about and what the decisions were that were being made for Rochester. That information was a little bit above us.
Yeah, it's really interesting. I'm looking up this Knudsen lady, Kristy Knudsen. I mean, you look at her license and certificates. She's greenhouse gases, the Management Institute, Climate Financial Disclosure Certified. I mean, she is green energy project manager, professional. You just look up her renewable energy professional smart sheet product certified. I mean, she's green energy all the way to the tilt. And she's running your program in Rochester. She should be an interesting one to do a case study on and find out her background because it appears that she's got some really, a lot of background on the sustainability movement. And she's gotta run the ship there, I think.
And of course, whenever you hear the word green or sustainability, you know that it's probably neither. I mean, in my opinion, we've been sold a lot of stuff. And it's a four-letter word that starts with S, but it's green energy and sustainability. It's probably neither.
Well, it is. What it is, is a redistribution of wealth. They're taking from the rich and giving it to the poor. And that's not from neighbor to neighbor. That's from country to country. And they just had the COP twenty-nine two weeks ago, which is Conference of the Parties twenty-nine. That's the twenty-ninth time they've met. And they had to reduce the amount of money that facilitates these green energy projects. They wanted to have one point three trillion dollars by 2035. They could only muster up, believe it or not, like you had mentioned, all these countries that basically wanna get out of it, Brexit, whatever. They could only muster up six hundred million. And all the developing countries were furious, all the African countries, because the redistribution of wealth is no different than welfare, right? The developed countries are given to the undeveloped countries, they're trying to raise the poverty level that they say. And a lot of these countries, corporations are going into these developing countries and bringing in business ideas. And they're trying to expand their business models. And when they only got six hundred billion out of one point three trillion, that's, think about that. That's very little. And they were furious. The development countries were furious. They said, how are we gonna live? How are we gonna survive? That's no different than a welfare person. It's not, we're gonna survive if we don't have this money coming in. And now that Trump will get us out of the green energy movement again, probably pull us away from the United Nations Paris Climate Agreement again, from the uh United Nations uh Paris Climate Agreement again. Uh, then I think that's why the countries are saying, no, we're done, we're walking away. And um I think we're gonna see less money being facilitated for green energy, uh for solar. Uh, but on the other hand, in Minnesota, we're so deep into this, and it's written into our comprehensive plans. We're gonna try to continue this, and uh they're gonna continue with with very little funding. So I think we're gonna see uh I think there's gonna see uh rates of electricity really skyrocket. Because I just looked at MISO, by the way, I pulled up MISO uh just a second ago. And you know, I told you MISO, uh real-time energy is about two point five uh as we speak, that's usually what it is. On on solar, right, but right now, MISO is minus two right now, minus two. It's minus two, not plus two. And remember, we're trying to make up uh eighty-five percent of coal and natural gas by two thousand thirty. Right now, they're at minus two on solar. They're they're producing no solar, that means all the solar is shut down as we speak right now. Or it's it's pulled all the energy right out. And wind is around seven, nuclear is around uh eleven point three uh megawatts, so uh natural gas is at twenty four, and then coal is at twenty five, twenty six megawatts. Uh, so you can see the big difference in there from minus two to twenty twenty six megawatts, so um uh you would have to cover all the United States with solar and get rid of every bit of uh of 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 agriculture, and you still would not produce what nuclear produces in in one year. You you cannot, you cannot reduplicate it with the sun, it just doesn't work. Look at real time, just pull it up, real time, MISO, real time.
M I S O dot com.
Yeah, M I S O, uh, I'm sorry, uh, it's M I O, so, looks like it's dot org. I I didn't say dot com, did I? It's it says dot org up here.
M I S O dot O R G dot org.
Yeah, if you say MISO real-time energy, it'll it'll show, it'll show, it'll show a dial, and it shows you the grid conditions normal, it shows you the grids right up there in front. And um supply and demand, it shows you all your energy. It's a, it's a good source to tell you whether we're producing or not, and what's produced at that time. Right now, solar has been drained, it's at a negative. So that means they have to turn on something else to compensate for the solar being lost, something else has to generate. You know, so uh you know, most of that county is no different than Sterns County, you know, they got into Soul Smart, they got into Great Plains Institute. And they got, the University of Minnesota, believe it or not, is behind most of this.
Yes.
Uh, they are the ones pushing this, they're the one bringing their college students out there through G I S, I don't know if you've heard of G I S. And they're mapping out our lands, they're mapping out our waters, and then they're sending all of this data back to a data center. And everything that we do has been data process processed through the University of Minnesota. So if you wanna look at your 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 people that are pushing this, it's state-funded organizations like the University of Minnesota that's that's advancing the S D G, Sustainable Development Goals in Minnesota. And you can just type in Minnesota, University of Minnesota's S D Gs, and it'll come up with websites, it'll tell you how they're doing it. We're under siege in Minnesota, we are completely under siege by government money with with renewable energies, and I think we're gonna see a big downswing for at least four years. Uh, of money coming back in and solar and wind, um failing at just one every level. That's that's the way I look at it.
Uh, uh, thanks, Ron, cuz it makes perfect sense that Agenda twenty one and Agenda twenty thirty is all about cataloging, inventorying, and controlling all resources on planet Earth. Human sources, uh, animal resources, mineral resources, water resources, land usage resources. Agenda twenty one, Agenda twenty thirty is truly about controlling, it's it's about world domination. It's it's bizarre to consider, these these people have actually been doing this right in front of us. And you and I are old enough to remember when the Brazil good uh Accords took place in the nineties. They told us this was all going to happen. And then they went through a process where they claimed that it was going to be a conspiracy theory, but now everybody's actually under it, and you you can't convince people that this is what's happening. But it's, they really want to inventory everything and uh and keep track of its usage.
And when you say everything, let's let's make that perfectly clear. They wanna monitor uh the air you dr- the air you breathe, the food you eat, and the water you drink, and your land usage. Everything has been monitored. The the G I S is monitoring your land and the water, uh they're monitoring your energy through uh through uh solar energy resources at the University of Minnesota, everything you do right now, everything that has the word SMART in it. And SMART is an acronym, by the way. And they're monitoring everything through smartphones, smart meters, smart cars. Anything, they use SMART for just about everything now. When you see the word SMART, that means you're being monitored. And you give up your fifth right amendment.
They spend money for watches that will monitor their heart rate, their blood pressure. So the the monitor that that's inside the watch can actually keep track of their blood sugar rates and so forth. And and then the smart meters in your home, the thermostat keeps track of your usage of energy inside your house. And your your telephone monitors the way that you walk and uh how much noise you make while you're sleeping, are you snoring and so forth? So you're, all of the smart devices you have are monitoring every aspect of your life. And your car is doing that now too, and reporting back to how much energy, how fast you're driving, what the mileage, wh- what the fuel consumption rate is of your vehicle and so forth. It's being automatically reported back.
It's interesting you say that about the car, you know, when I was in the car industry, we took classes on these smart cars, you know, and how much um how much they're changing their technology in in the radios. So if your radio's on, you're talking about, I wanna go get toilet paper. Then toilet pa- and you say that to your wife or spouse or whoever, you say, I need toilet paper. Radio commercials are now throwing out ads based off of your your verbiage that you say in your car, and they could they could direct their ads to what you say. I was actually um talking about potatoes the other day, and the next thing I know, I started getting uh stuff on my, on my ads, on my um uh advertisement on the computer talking about buying tomato, potatoes, I thought, what, I've never seen that before. But I was talking about buying potatoes. You know, I was looking at potato sites, so I started getting ads on potatoes, so. They're monitoring everything you do, and and solar energy with that. By the way, when they when they monitor you, when there's smart meters, by the way, I opted out of smart meters, by the way. I spent fifteen extra dollars a month to opt out of a smart meter. And so mine will say, um, not, you know, they have to have somebody come up and read my smart meter, they can't just drive by your house and 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 scan it as they go up. So um they know now, what time you wake up, what time you turn your lights on, what lights they turn on, what time you shower, how much water you use in your shower. Do you open up your garage door at five thirty every morning? Do you close it at five thirty every night when you come home, open and close it when you come home? They monitor everything you do in your household through smartphones and smart meters. It's an invasion, uh but you gave it up when you went into SMART. You gave up all your uh, you gave up your first, your fifth right amendment of the U S Constitution of illegal search and seizure because you spoke about it and you went through the airways, and now you're working through microwave towers, which you uh it gives up your fifth right amendment of search and seizure. But if you have a wired-in telephone in your house, they have to have a warrant to get to your telephone. Uh, it's it's two different things. One, if you went through the air, you're public, if you go underneath the ground, you're not. Yeah.
Uh, this has been a tremendous session, everybody's gonna enjoy this conversation, I think, and this is one of the one of the higher-energy, high-information conversations that you've given us, Ron. And thanks for your uh expertise in this area, it's appreciated.
Yeah, you're you're under siege, and and make sure that everybody understands that solar is a scam. It's a scam definitely on landowners, because how they're trying to get into your land is through conservation easements. Because uh they want thirty by thirty by the year year two thousand thirty. Thirty by thirty is a project where the government wants to own thirty percent of all land in the United States by thirty, twenty uh by thirty, by two thousand thirty. They want fifty percent of all land owned by the government by two thousand fifty. So that's why they keep moving that needle, twenty twenty, twenty thirty, twenty forty, twenty fifty, they're moving that needle constantly cuz they're trying to get to where they own your land. Conservation easements, by the way, is a piece of your land when you go into a private-public partnership with a farmer, and he doesn't realize that that he did just lease out his land, he leased out his land to a public utility company, which made it public now and not private from one part, one uh farmer to another. And so they don't understand, they went into a P U C and they brought everybody in around them, all their neighbors are involved, because now they got a P U C right next to their property. And uh it's involving them uh also, so we are all being taken in, it's all voluntary. It's all voluntary. The Agenda twenty one was voluntary, and we didn't accept it in two thousand nineteen ninety-two. We got into it in two thousand fifteen, they expanded the S D Gs. But everything you see is voluntary, don't fall for the scam. And tell your farmer friends, walk away. Excel Energy cannot put up transmission towers on farmers' yards if they don't have solar to transmit. And I told them that, and they did not like that. I told everybody in the audience, don't lease out your land, you don't, it won't take your uh land for transmission towers. And so we need to get the word out there, don't give up your rights.
It's it's astonishing, even the farmers' union down here in Rochester in this area, I mean, not inside Rochester, but the farmers' union was in favor of some of the uh agendas put forward by former Congressman Tim Penny where people's land, farmers' land can be uh uh taken. Uh, and uh and uh so they they call it, the slogan for it is um capturing the philanthropic wealth of rural America cuz they wanna prevent farmers from passing their land on to their kids. So um they they convince farmers to sign these agreements that will allow the government to uh take possession of the land when the farmer passes away. And then the government doles that land out or sells it off as a resource, and the money goes to nonprofits. So it's it's a land grab. I mean, this is going back to Stalin. This is going back to the Soviet Union, taking control from farmers. It 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 reminds me of tricks played on farmers in North Dakota. It's kind of a trick that uh farmers were played in uh Sweden and Norway to get the the small farmers to give up their land to the wealthy barons. We're headed back toward a kind of uh feudalism of of the the late Dark Ages. It's a, it's a feudalistic system to to have human beings not be connected to the land. And everybody's supposed to get up and move, it's uh, it's like Russia eh uh at the turn of the century of the uh into the twentieth century. Strange times.
Yeah, it's it's interesting you bring up, I just wanna touch on that subject real quick about the uh land grab that they're using for farmers. So they're using the idea that the farmers don't wanna um to uh inherit, they 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 don't wanna inherit to their kids because their kids uh went off to be in the STEM program, science, technology, engineering, math, because farming was too beneath them, right? And yet farmers are all wealthy, the Minnesota ranks as the second most millionaires per capita, but these kids don't wanna go out there and work on something that produces a lot of money for them. But um there's seven billion uh dollars worth of land out there in your area that they're trying to capture. The goal of that is they're trying to capture five uh five percent of that. If they can capture five percent, they 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 feel that they can, the foundations can function very well. And so what what they do is you can take that land, you can donate it to a to a foundation. The foundation says, okay, you donated that land to us, you can stay on the land, you can farm that land indefinitely, it's yours to stand as though it's yours. And when you pass on, the land now becomes ours. Oh, by the way, Mister Farmer, you could donate that land to any charitable cause that you wanna donate to, whether it's a it's a park or a school or whatever. But in the end, the foundation gets that money, and it could be two, three, four million dollars. The goal is, there's seven billion doll- uh billion dollars worth of yeah, of 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 land out there, they want five percent of that, they want five percent, that's their goal. And uh and and again, what is it? It's voluntary. It's voluntary, there's nothing mandatory about, you don't have to relinquish anything, you just think that you're doing a good cause, in fact, you're you're selling out the people. So that's a good point you brought up, because that's happening uh across the country. But in your area, in southern Minnesota, it's very, very big with Southwest Initiatives, the Initiative Foundation. Uh, when they wanna, they're they're pushing that um. By the way, there are six initiative foundations all throughout Minnesota, there are six different regions, and they're heavily pushing what you just said.
Fascinating.
Yeah, you got W C I in the north, you got West Central, uh uh which is out of Rochester, you got Initiative Foundation out of Little Falls. And they're pushing for the farmers to give up their land, because they're gonna, they're gonna benefit out of this land hugely, hugely. And then once they get that land, now they get funded by the federal government, okay? So they got a lot of money through grants and matching grants and all these other different grants. So they'll be holding to the the government with all these grants, without they got this money. So what we're doing is we're giving up land voluntarily instead of uh instead of instead of a foreign country coming or taking our land from us, we're we're deliberately just voluntarily surrendering our land to to the collective.
So they've destroyed rural communities, right? I mean, corporatism and the international globalist destroys farming communities. So there's a lower tax base. So good, so services in rural communities are going down. For example, hospitals and EMS services and fire ser- uh first responders. Everything's going down in terms of servicing the rural communities. So eventually, let's say there's a a farmer out there in the middle of nowhere, all of a sudden, you're the last taxpayer in your area, so you're sort of being forced into the fifteen-minute cities model. You're being forced into, you know, urbanization or the needs of the urban. And and it doesn't make sense to be out there all by yourself. So it's it's not, it's not exactly voluntary, it's, there's an element of cohesion there of destroying rural communities, where these were functioning communities uh four decades ago, three decades ago before Walmart, before um uh the the destruction of the the small-town bank and the small-town newspaper and so forth, and supermarket, and the small-town grocery store. You would have had a livery station, and you would have had an animal husbandry office or a veterinarian service. And you would have had a a granary, right? But they made all that go away, and it was, I think it was deliberate since the nineteen fifties and sixties to destroy rural America.
Just, yeah, and also, that's a good point, I'll just change directions, one of the reasons for uh that is one of the who who is behind this is the Nature Conservancy, the Audubon Society, and many of those uh those natural nature lovers out there, tree huckers. They're the ones that are trying to get the land back, and by the way, they say it, they're trying to get the land back pre-Columbus. They wanna convert the land back that were were fifty percent of the land should be uninhabitable. So you see these bike trails, right? They talk about bike trails in Agenda twenty one, you see them in your cities. Well, those bike trails are what they call connectivity trails, and they have buffer zones on each side of the bike trail. Another uh uh Agenda twenty one term. So they want you to see the environment, they want you to view the forests and the woods, they just don't want you to be part of it. So they're forcing you off the lands, and they're already drawing their maps of trails, of bike trails and and uh and uh and sidewalks and fifteen-minute cities and thirty by thirty, and another one's called C forty. Uh, they've got different names, but they, it's all by design. And if people think that we're we're, they were making this up, all you have to do is do your research. I mean, I'm I've been an expert on this for what, uh fifteen years, and speak on it everywhere. I mean, I I I know the guidelines, I know what these politicians are doing, I know what same Sen Jim is up to, and Norton's up to. And and we've got many uh senators and representatives and county commissioners, they're they're all falling for it too, because they think this is the way they're gonna see the future. The future is they're taking away the rights and the liberties of the kids and grandkids.
That's right, they're actually being traitors to the people that they claim that they're helping and servicing, but they're really not. claim that they're helping and servicing, but they're really not. And it's uh it's it's no way to live. The the people that are living inside these urban centers now are not having a lot of fun. So we're seeing a retreat from Chicago or Portland or Seattle, San Francisco, LA. People are trying to get here from Baltimore. And as they increase population density in these more rural area, they they think of us as rural. And you know, people that come here from Chicago think that we are rural in Rochester. That we need to respect the needs of the urban, that's a that's a common phrase that's used. And uh if if you want us to be more like Chicago, frankly, you can keep it cuz I don't wanna live like people live in Chicago. In fact, the people that come here from Chicago don't want to live like the people that live in, that's why they came here. They don't wanna live in Chicago. So you know, uh hey, before you put your feet on the on the table uh and relax, how about you just try to fit in a little bit?
Well, we you can see, you you can see the end result, you you see that they're importing people or people are moving from the inner city, moving out to the clear areas like St. Cloud in Rochester and what's happening to the crime rate? Do you see it? Do you see an uptick in crime?
Not supposed to notice that, though, otherwise you're a racist or a whatever phobe, whatever phobe.
Well, St. Cloud, St. Cloud and Wade Park were connected, they're part of the same city. They're ranked number three at eight numbers within the state for crime rate per capita. Rochester's gotta be up there, all these cities are seeing an influx of crime because we're importing everybody running out of the major cities and in the end, it's um, it's gonna fail, it's gonna fail.
And yeah, in fact, we were talking about this tonight, I was with uh a a couple of uh elected officials here. And uh we're talking about the opioid, but the fentanyl and the methamphetamine that's coming into uh Minnesota communities and uh the FBI raids that have gone on in St. Cloud and um yeah. Yeah, it's just, it's just happened within the last twenty four hours that there's new FBI raids related to organized crime in Minnesota. And we're seeing, I I I mean, I it's Medicare and Medicaid fraud at this point. But the people that tell us that we're supposed to um be happy that, well, at least we're not like Baltimore. At least we're not as bad as Baltimore. That doesn't give you any, you know, that doesn't make me feel better. Is this what we're comparing ourselves to now? Supposed to feel happy that we're not as bad as Baltimore? That's sort of stupid.
Right, it really is, but we're we're all, they they think of us as stupid cuz we're in the role, even though we're the second most millionaires per capita in the rural communities in Minnesota. Uh we still know how to survive.
And it's so horrible. I wish we would have a real winter, though. I wa- I wish we would have like six feet of snow. Those, remember those snowbanks back when we were kids and you would like dig a tunnel on the on the boulevard for fifty feet cuz the the snow was like twenty feet in the air? And and uh what, I think we need a little bit of forty below, you know, in six feet of snow.
Right, we could walk right up, walk right up on the rooftops and slide right down, we had our own, we had our own uh our own park in our yard.
Yeah, yeah, it was kinda like you'd have your own park in your yard and you would have that that playtime and, you know, have the ollie, ollie oxen free uh all winter long.
I I just hope people don't realize, don't get this in their head that this is some type of global warming cuz the temperatures are still cold, we're just not getting the snow. So this is, this is, this is not climate change, this is purely just climate doing its best, you know, we're going through a cycle, that's all we're going through.
Weather, it's just weather.
Whether we have it or whether we don't, it's still weather.
Uh thanks so much, Ron, and it's it's just been great talking to you again. And I think this was a session that people will really uh wanna dig through, maybe even listen to twice cuz there's so much information, so so uh fast paced, high energy, high information. Thanks for bringing it tonight, Ron.
Thank you very much. And remember, it's all voluntary, quit giving up your rights just because they say it's it's the end thing, you know? It doesn't mean you have to be part of, you know, jump off the off the bridge just because everybody else is doing it, right? You don't have to voluntarily give up your rights uh. So stick with the uh United States Republic and uh we'll be fine.
Thanks, Ron. See you next time.
Enjoy. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.